Get started, Darrell, and I could ask you to bless the meeting and then we'll stand for that.
Lord, we've just come for you this morning. We're grateful and thankful for just being able to come before you in prayer to start a morning off. We pray for our county, pray for our country and our county and our state. Pray for those that individuals that live and work here that, Lord, as it go through this Christmas season, that is a busy time. Can be a lot of, a lot of stress and anxiety, Lord, that you would just work your way in folks' lives to bring peace and joy and replace that. Help where conditions are at, where there's stress, it can be physical or any type of just things that folks are going through this time of year, whether it's financial or any of those hardships or spiritual. You're ready and available. Pray for folks to seek you in this time of year as always. Thank you for your time that we can meet as a county commission, discuss our business, make decisions, and, Lord, we pray that as you prompt, we would make those decisions that would just please you and look forward to the rest of the day. Thank you for your grace, Lord, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. I have minutes for December third. Motion to approve.
Second, David's motion to approve.
And the motion, second, approved minutes is presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Next item on the agenda, I had the, we opened bids last week for our roof. We had two very different bids. I think both companies that bid believe that their bid met the specifications that were put out, but they were very, very different. So I'd like to bring these back up for discussion. We had a bid from Ivy Roofing and they had previously installed the roof back on, in 2015. So I brought a copy of that contract. And at that time, they did have a ten-year warranty as part of the work that was performed. And it was, the warranty was through probably their company and then Aztec. And so they submitted their bid and I want to pass it around for review again. The bid amount again was seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we also received a bid for Stiles Roofing. And their proposal was to, in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars. And additional options, a twelve-year labor warranty with three enchil endorsements would be an additional four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars if I read their quote right. So I'm going to pass that down for review. And after we've had a chance to review those, I would entertain a motion to approve if you so desire.
I would make the motion that we approved the Ivy bid. It solves our purpose to go out for bid was to just get an extension on the current warranty. And the other bid basically has to start back from scratch and redo it all the way through to get another company to be able to take the bid, the warranty. So I think that's where our pricing differences come up. I think Ivy just solves where we were originally thinking, just trying to extend the roof that we currently have. Ivy's bid does that. So I would make the motion to approve the Ivy roofing bid.
I would say that I think Ivy is just planning on recoding it and finding any problems that may be there. And it's kind of like you're all said, it's what we were expecting as far as extending, I don't know. Addressing any problems.
Okay, I had a motion and second to accept the bid from Ivy Roofing, an amount of seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. I need those, I guess I need that one additional. Do we need the one that, I need both of those additional.
Oh, not initial.
That one?
Yeah. The second order of business, I'll sign it after I, the second order of business would be, we had reviewed a proposal from MTS Contracting. And that was regarding the, I'm just going to say for lack of knowing the proper term, recocking around the windows and the different joints in the stone. I visited with that gentleman last week, I think after a meeting. And his proposal's still good. It was dated October first and then we had inquired him. I think David had asked about one of the options on it. He assured me the quote is still good. And I asked him about the scope of the work. He still believes they can get it done next year. He wasn't real firm on that, but once we commit, we do have all of twenty-five and twenty-six to have the work completed and pay for it. So I asked him also about this when he was here, he'd made a comment that the scope of the work in conjunction with the roof, if there was any interactions between the different chemicals that the company used. And he did recommend that we have the roof done first and then they would come and do their, their work. It would take initially, he mentioned, probably two to three months to do, to do their work. So that quote, the base bid price was sixty-eight thousand, two fifty. And then there were two alternates, actually, I think three alternates. And reseal all windows and perimeters with urethane sealant. That price was thirty-five thousand, three twenty-nine. And then the other alternate that I believe we considered was reseal all stone and brick sealant joints. And that was thirty-eight thousand, three twenty-two. And then that would trigger prevailing wage and that's another twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty. I think the total price was one fifty-four and some dollars. I didn't have that out. Someone pass that down? And we entertain a motion to go ahead and execute that. And there was the other alternate on there that I don't think we would accept would be the, the brick on the retaining wall. It was about nineteen hundred, Darrell, so I don't, I don't think we need to do that at this time. I'll be right back. I need you to list the projects. Darrell, you got yours there, don't you?
Yeah.
Did I have a motion on the table?
I will make a motion that we approve the proposal from MTS Contracting as proposed. With the only exception is to take out the sealant, remove spilling bricks on the retaining walls and steps. I would say.
I have a motion, second. I'd like to get that dollar amount so we have that. So I know the new commissioners figure out how to pay for it next year. That's just a tip of the iceberg. Anything else you got to tell us to approve for you to pay for next year?
Now, as far as that, I believe so. I'd like to look a little bit more in depth than that myself.
We've got some time here. It's running closer all the time, though.
In shorter. Both ends.
It is both sides quite in there. Clock isn't ticking yet for you, but it's getting close.
I was pretty aware of that scenario when this all started. But the further I dug, it's more of a commercial type, you know, you just won't, yeah, reserve it.
Right, no, no, no.
It really does kind of on the fence when I started, but I, I think it's.
No, I, I agree with having that work done. It's just that I would like to look into it and splitting some of that up to where it doesn't get into the prevailing wage part, because I think that you could.
Well, you would have to get different people to bid to do it almost.
Not necessarily. We've done some other stuff. It's also that way. It phases, it's called phases. Top maps, the phases. If it would blow, you know, sealant, sealant.
Just waiting for the conversation. All right, so I had a motion and a second to approve the proposal from MTS Contracting for the previously described services. That amounts one fifty-four thousand, two fifty-one. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign of that proposal. I guess, gentlemen, if you'd initial the top of that for us and then we'll execute that. Next order of business would be, by way of the agenda, would be just general, general county business at this point. We can come back to the ARPA balance here in a minute if you'd like, or I can take that up now.
I do have some figures for the roof.
Okay, let's go ahead and take them up.
Okay, so for the shop heat, we've got two options. The natural gas heater is the two-hundred-thousand BTU. It is thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Is that for one?
Yeah.
And that's the recommend, recommendation just one.
We're going to replace the ones we had over there now. The whole, the whole, they should be replaced.
This, that, that needs a plumber to, to come in and replon those gas lines to where it would be going at, but.
Those were how much, Darrell?
It's thirty-eight hundred dollars. Yeah. And so the, the used oil heater, which has the tank and the heaters, the tank is twenty-five hundred, it's a heated tank, and then the heater itself is fourteen thousand, sixteen-five for that total. So it's about twice as much as to heat that, but we're also.
Lots of used motor.
Would you say those numbers again, please? Twenty-five hundred for the tank and fourteen thousand for the heater. And there's just one of those. It's a big unit. So total sixteen-five for that one. And the other ones are thirty-eight hundred apiece. So we also have a cost estimate for a mini split heater air for the office and it's thirty-four hundred. And then a outdoor storage delivered and set for fifty-seven sixty.
My sizes, yeah.
I didn't get that. Forty-four, I think fifty-seven sixty. I think it's about what they are. Okay. Forty foot. Mike asks if it's possible to get two of those, but obviously, one would be a benefit.
All right, and those items there, the only one that would have to be put out for bid would be, and we probably need to get quotes, secure additional quotes if we take any action items, the one that would have to go out for bid would be the, if we decide to go with that oil, used oil heater. And so we probably need to make a decision on that because that would have to be set out there for two weeks. So that would put us our last meeting in a month to make that decision. So let's talk about that one first. I'll just entertain any, any thoughts on it?
My discussion, looking yesterday, if you go the basically seventy-five hundred way, you still end up with thousands a month in propane. So that, that cost is added on top of that. And maybe it wouldn't be quite as bad with newness, but you go with the used oil way, a lot of that is free, but you have maintenance to go with.
And that maintenance looks like what?
It's just, you know, taking apart and clean them and basically buy a company, most insurance has to require that, so.
You buy a what, is that, what was you, you said insurance required, a what is it?
It's that they have the maintenance by the same kind of people.
Oh, the maintenance.
Yeah. And you have to do that for almost a couple of years. There's a little bit of cost there. But the used oil would be utilizing all that, probably less money. Less money per year. But at the same time. Same time it has a life span of well, so.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about the natural gas, two-hundred-thousand BTUs. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing one or I'm hearing two.
The ones that they have there now are both same age and they are.
Dinosaurs.
Dinosaurs.
So with the wood heat in there, could we, could we just do, do one, do you think?
Depends on how cold it is to get it up to par.
It, whatever is needs, it has, it needs the, the building, because you're not, it's not going to be like, I'm going to call it warm in there. It's, there's too many doors and too many opening of the doors and it's not set up very well insulated. It's just like a regular outdoor shop building that has a little bit, but there's a lot of, needs to be heated. And a lot of, a lot of stuff that you definitely don't want to have frozen. I, myself, I like the idea that we're repurposing all that used motor oil. We've got plentiful amount of that. Matter of fact, we're always looking for places to come and get it. And I don't know that, maybe future, you know, know what that's going to have in mind. You have to pay to have it hauled off. And I've got those, you know, like everything else, they've improved upon those over time and especially if we're going to have to have two of those other ones, we're just, we can almost pay for that within one or, one or, one or two years and the system's paid for.
So let me, let me weave into the conversation then the unit for the office. Does it have air conditioning in it now?
The office, yeah, there's a window area. It just, according to Mike, it just doesn't, it's not really keeping it cool.
Well, the doors opening and closing all the time and not a lot of people there at any given time. We'd wonder what the cost, and I don't know, David, if you were able to secure a cost about a month or so ago. You had mentioned that that heater in there needed to be replaced. Did we ever get a cost on that?
I think it would be some work in the hours.
Is that for the penthouse heater that they got on the wall?
Regular wall heater, which doesn't really cause it to freeze.
Yeah, and really get heat, get your set two foot in front of it. Then do a great job on the remainder. I think I would. Yeah, I, I think I would make the recommendation that if we're considering the used oil, let's go ahead and get that out for bid. The cost of that's going to be the legal notice. But that's going to have to be done now. So I'm going to recommend to the commission that we put that out for bid. And then we also secure an additional quote on the natural gas, two-hundred-thousand BTU. So ask Mike to get an additional quote on that. For the auditors, we, we need to have a, a, yeah, a second bid there. And then also then the third part would be if that unit in the office, I'm not inclined to go either way at this point. Either the mini split or just replacing the heater, but I would, I would, if we need something a little bigger on the heat in there, let, let's get a price on it. And then we'll have all three options to come back here. And right now, they're all functioning. Right?
Yeah. The ones out of the shop is, it's not, I don't know.
It was maybe one of them.
Yeah, one of them was.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it was.
But it's, it's dilapidated.
Would, would that be the?
Sure, sure, they'll build a fire.
Except for one unit that's working partially.
And did you want, did you say get another quote for the mini split?
Yes, yes. So you can try to get that from whatever company he gets the, gets the other. Are we in agreement that that's the path forward?
What about the outdoor storage?
I think Darrell would probably need to look at his budget on that. And we need to look at the remaining items on the, or the funds we have left. We did have on the HVAC units, we do have about sixteen thousand there that we're paying in this group of checks. And that will, that will bring the maintenance budget close to whether it can carry those two other compressors that are due, that were about twenty grand. So I, I think we, we need to get the pause button on those and just see what the budget looks like in the roof. Okay, now I'm in general county business, so is there other items there on that ARPA list?
Anything else come up that we could talk about previously? Which, did we get a direction on the signs?
Well, I'm trying to stall you and David out a little bit on that, just full, full.
It felt like something was going on.
Full transparency here. Can I, can I answer that later?
You don't need to incriminate yourself.
So I, I have no issue with the, or no dissenting opinion on the letters, and that was about three. So if we're still okay with that, then I'll let the sign company know. I, I'm really not loving the multi-color sign on the stair tower. So what I'd like to do is I'll bring in the next meeting some, two letters that came off of Central Bank. And I'd like to show those to you. I should have brought them in this morning. They're hanging on my garage wall. And let you look at those, because I think it's a, it's a, it's a more tasteful match for a government building than, than, than this. And I think once you see it, you'll likely agree with me on that. So can we wait one more week before we do something that we're going to regret?
I do have two votes.
Should we regret?
I think after this many years, I think we can give you another week, another week, fine.
Two? Can I have two? Well, I'll get two. Can I have three?
You can take as long as you like, really.
That way we don't get blamed either way.
I wonder if I can pull.
Take it right on past the other, right on past that deadline and you can put it in next year's budget.
Okay, so Darrell, I answered your question on that. The next item I had on my list was the maintenance. I think we ought to hold that, that twenty thousand for those two compressors at this point. Mike will probably give us a budget report. I bet today or tomorrow, since these checks are processed, he'll probably push that out. The other item I had was the actual way or the automatic door openers down here on nine-one-one. We did have a bid on it for eleven thousand and some change. They did come yesterday and the doors here on Second Street are, are working much better. But I don't think they're a hundred percent yet. So we'll probably have that company back and before we release the order for the nine-one-one, I want to make sure the day that this is complete and we can be confident that the scope of the work is, is completed. And we don't have to worry about those doors, so. And then the other thing we had was we had a, we had a request informally from Conway Special Road District on that. I believe Steve called it a bridge and that was thirty-five thousand. He was going to put that out for bid. That's all I have left on my list at this point. That's all I have left on my list at this point. Was there something else that we, and we did have the audit up there.
Any else other than patrol car?
And we did have the patrol car, that's right. And we did agree to outfit one. And I think, I think that came in at about, estimated about 12,000. And so that's where.
We had wrote down, I think she came back to 12, which she said.
Okay. And there may be a different amount that's already been plugged in temporarily in the budget, but I think 55,000 probably cover, cover that.
With that being said, we have about 35 left.
Okay. And that's not including any of the heating, uh, options that we're considering for road and brake, correct?
That's working up this probably.
All right, I'll take up any other county, general county business. So, uh, he was, uh, he was making a call that bid or that proposal was, came in late in maybe 22, early 23 as the construction project started. So he was going to contact his vendor and get an updated quote on that. I think the original quote was about 3500 if I'm not mistaken. Gene had gotten that sometime earlier.
We don't want to keep that in there. We need to have it coming in here.
Yeah. All right, uh, so Lynda, you have some routine business, we'll do that. And the next item on the agenda would be a work study and that'll be the budget. Double up in there. Everybody have a chance to see the sales tax. Yeah, down in Uriah State.
Yeah.
Yeah. What was that, 1% for the year?
So LETC F, that line item that we got, in order to close the issue, which it has to be the interest remains, so this is the remaining interest to be transferred to Gerald. And Krista and Robin verified those numbers, so they should then wipe out that grant.
Okay, we've been presented with a court order to move the interest out of the ARPA LETC F account to, that has to be zeroed out by the end of the year. It looks like the total is $2,947.82. Uh, that was $113.53 left from 2022 and 2024. That account earned $2,834.29. Once you have a chance to review that, I would entertain motion to approve.
Motion to approve the order.
Okay, we have motion second to approve the court order to move the interest out of the LETC F fund for purposes to roll me down. Any further discussion? See, no, they would say aye. Aye, all pros and cons. Court order approved. That's it? Next item, we have work study and that's the 2025 budget. And I'll see if I can raise Lynda to, if any sign these checks and then we'll, then we'll, then we'll start that. How about those?
Cheats.
What about those chips?
You know things are rolling your way because I'm, there's been so many of those field goals hit like that that just palked back out into the end zone and, and just walk off and just shrug your shoulders and think, oh, well, next year. And they go in like the distance.
It shouldn't have worked for him.
He, he, he pulled that so hard when he, when he kicked it. No, no, oh, no, he's going to kick it out the, over into the other guy's bench and you look like he kicked it that, shaped it that hard.
Where was it?
Thirty cents, 30 yards. It was just a chip shot. It was like, he was, it's only second field goal that he's kicked for game winning. So it was like the pressure was on.
You see Harrison Buck here grinning over there on the sideline?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. It's almost as bad as the Chargers lady that was, I don't know what she does, if she's assistant to a head coach or what, but she would just slap them the whole time when they hit. She was like, boy. They had her, had the head coach never broke a, guy behind him was like, and then she was laughing. What else you going to do? Pretty funny.
Lynda, what's worrying going to be?
I just have a nice weapon correctly. I'm going to ask him if they want to interrupt the meeting or.
Excuse me.
While we're signing these, I'll just, the, uh, Channel 3 having a interview with Alan Nice at the collector there in Green County. And their Senate Bill 190 had, they took applications through on, who I think it is, but it doesn't actually affect their 2024 bill or affect their 2025 bill. And, um, it made me think that, we had an email yesterday, did you, were you in on that email? That we have someone that is, a, a group of counties is wanting how, how each county was implementing, and let's see, Boone County, they're asking that from.
I contacted.
Did you?
Okay. I gave her a call and I think their commission was just putting together, compiling how various counties have implemented different aspects of that, whether there was a maintenance test or whether there was an extension for the blind phone.
No, yeah. Okay, if we turn them all back to you.
You're calling.
So on the 31st, it's a Tuesday. Do we want to have swearing in, just pause out three guys' meetings? Or would you prefer that I run it through later in the day or something?
I thought maybe we had discussed convening our meeting to take her being last minute. We'll have maybe a couple bids come in that we'll need to, uh, make a decision on. And then maybe set that up for, gentlemen, would you be good about 9:30 or so on the 31st to be sworn in? Would that be a good time?
Good for me, I'll, I'll be here anyway.
Okay, is that fine? Would, why don't we say nine, 9:30?
I just, I just want to make sure there wasn't something that was going to run conflict.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't anticipate a lot of business that, that morning, but just in case, if we say 9:30, that way, uh, we can, we can take care of the business we have and then we have our swearing in ceremony.
Swearing in 9:30, December 31st?
Yeah. Was that good?
Yeah, would you, would you open to taking a, uh, just a, a break between the end of our meeting and doing the swearing in like a 30 minute or something like that? Give David another chance to hustle the beast out of here.
Here on the 12th.
If we want to get. We, we gotta get the road, man.
If there's an ice storm, you know, you don't have it until.
What's the worst thing you're gonna do?
Well, maybe clean the office out or something, I don't know, sprinkle some dust or dirt on the floor, I don't know, just leave a trail. Hey, so you have to swear it in, that's not the takeover, it's, it's for January.
Okay, okay. Well.
If the cows are on the road, they'll still be calling.
They're still going to be out the road, okay?
They'll call you.
Okay. We all need to break then, I would just.
You two, if you would, come on up for just kind of run commonalities of overview of budget process.
This is budget 101.
Yeah. All things.
We can call everybody.
All things generic. So I think you guys got a budget maybe at some point? Okay, all right, we can crunch you one. So on this, um, what we do is, is just, it's a book. Everybody has a chapter in it. It's a book that creates from a beginning process. And the beginning process is given out through a legal notice that will be put in the paper that says to the public, um, we're going to have a meeting on, I don't know, if we put it before or after Christmas or on 31st and maybe the 31st too. But anyway, we give two weeks notice to the public out in the newspaper and says we're going to have a pre-budget hearing and anybody that wants to, from the community that you can come in and say, here's how you think you should spend it. It's just, that's the commonality, that's the statute of it. It's a given, um, process. So in that also is, right before Thanksgiving, Robin sent out, sent out all the worksheets to every office holder, everyone that has, not only office holders, but everyone that has a playing part in the budget. And that can be everything from university extension to Red Cross to the 130 group service agreements on to, um, the health department on the wastewater agreements that we have with them.
Any initiative that takes money from the county.
Anybody you see in here has to be great budget. So those have been sent out and are coming back this week. We're beginning to get, Ligor and Court are beginning to get, um, certain court are beginning to get, just ours are in, maintenance is in. So everybody is, everybody that is participating is beginning to get those first rough drafts back into us now. So the draft drafts are here, it's not a stone, it's just a, here's what we see that is a need. And if something happens that, because it's like one side of the table to the other side of the table, when you're sitting back here and you go, well, how much is working, how much is the health insurance, how much does it have to happen for somebody else so that you can also be able to benefit? And on this side, you're considering all those options. When you're on this side of the table, you're presenting what you would like to have in your best estimate and best working process. Somewhere the two got to meet. And the commission is where those two meet. Now tomorrow with your meetings, you'll hear more about your responsible role in that, what your decisions lead to and, and, um, Now, tomorrow with your meetings, you'll hear more about your responsible role in that, what your decisions lead to and, and, um... You'll hear more of that from the attorney side or the legal side of it. But what this work study is, is just like everybody else is doing. We're just putting worksheets forward. It's a first rough draft. So, these guys are getting to see the first rough draft, first rough draft. And then you all are being copied it, just so you can begin to understand. It's kinda like just beginning to get the wheels spinning so that you see what's coming and where you get an understanding of how to begin January with it. So, as they turn over, anyone, everyone turns over these, we begin to put those into our budget worksheets. And putting those totals in gives us a look forward into what cash is available, so we may have with those. And so, Budget One-O-One is for each terminology, let's go with definitions. So, for the budget, you have table of contents. You have all your fund summaries that are here in the front. It tells you what funds do you have. These are funds and these are departments. So, if I opened up Road and Bridge, they tell you at the top of the sheets what they are. So, this is a fund. This is a cash fund. On the other hand, within here is a bunch of departments and general revenue, because general revenue is the only fund that houses multiple agencies, offices, everything else. But that cash balance is then shared by all. So, no matter if it's me, the commission, um, and, and some are different, like the assessor does not live in general revenue statutes. Opened up that they were governed different. They were created different, so they have their own separate fund. Nine-one-one has its own separate fund. So, learning those funds matters into intentionality of thinking, well, whose money is leaking out and whose balances are we dealing with? So, they have to be kept coordinated. So, as elections are in here and maintenance is in here, each one of these is gonna have a budget. And maintenance, we're gonna see this morning. But each one of these is gonna have a budget that lives out of this cash balance up here. When you come to Road and Bridge Fund, you've got a cash balance and only Road and Bridge. So, they're a checkbook all to themselves. Budget statutes.
Checkbook.
Budget, you heard the next sentence, oh, budget statutes. It's followed right up on that one.
You'll learn to understand what that means, what that means.
Budget, I just run right up on that one and say, and say, "Okay, here's how it's not like your personal checkbook though." It is in that you have funds you spend. But county, and I guess others too, but I know for county, county budget has to be set in a budget process, which we do. But once set, then it can never be changed. I'm just gonna leave it that for a second to soak. Expenditures can never be changed. Now, yes, they can if you have new money. But the mentality of thinking has to be, it's never changed from this point on. Because unless you get an L A T C F grant that came in later in the year because the federal government gave it to you, okay, they allow you to say, "Okay, well, that was new money that we didn't have at this point in time." So, you can have new money, therefore you can change your expenditure, money in, money out. Because these two don't flow together like, "Money in, now I can spend." That's at home. And here, it's not like that. It's, we hope you get the money in, plan well, because we hope to get the money in. Because that revenue over here is fueling your expenditures over here. And by cash version, you do have to watch that. Because if you're, if the state quit paying all of its reimbursements on fuel tax, which it's not, but you know, if the state quit paying all of those, your expenditure now, when you get ready to write a check, you can't write a check. So, you have to have cash, even if your budget says you've not spent all that you budgeted. So, there is that that has to be watched. But if your budget revenues come in as planned and therefore you can spend as you have planned, then your cash balance should be what you're projecting it to be. But these can't be changed. Like, um, I wanted, they're talking about a heater or something. I would like to do that in June. If you didn't plan for that fourteen thousand dollars in June somewhere out of your fund, it's not there. You're gonna have to wait till next year. So, that's how the expenditure side, is it making sense? Okay. That's how the expenditure side is. That is the part that typically hangs most new office holders up, is this unawareness of how severely set expenditures are. And you can't change them somehow, and you can't move them, and you can't just add to them or, 'cause you think in a private business you can. You know, it's a working process. So, so for funds.
And there is no block for miscellaneous?
There, there can, you have to plan that.
Your budget in.
Yeah, you have to plan that.
Make that line out of.
So, you do your best to stay ahead of the game. And yeah, you can have a miscellaneous in there. It's gotta be guarded because that runs back into your cash side too. So, if you don't spend it, marvelous. If you do, then you have it there, but yeah, you have to do that pre-planning to it. So, the funds that you deal with then are Road and Bridge, assessment, nine-one-one, separate funds. They're on cash. Law enforcement, sales tax in this one. Law enforcement, sales tax was passed in order to replace the SRTAX that was on landline funds for nine-one-one. So, the law enforcement, sales tax was passed in order to take care of that. It was an exchange of revenue income. Because at one point, the county knew that landline phones was dwindling. People were getting cell phones replaced on landlines and the source of revenue was dwindling rather than gaining. So, this came into it and was able to use that. So, law enforcement, sales tax, and a transfer out, funds nine-one-one. That's the source of the county for it. So, then capital improvement, and that's, that's a commission fund that belongs to the commission. Capital improvement belongs to the commission. Capital improvement's what we did our second street out here all that, that grade with. Capital improvement is also the fund that when we had the ice storm, back in whatever, first year Danny Rhodes was here. Yeah. It was like, two weeks in and the ice storm hit and he was brand new president commissioner and he's like, "And what do I do with this?" So, to his benefit and to the regulations of FEMA, you can do emergency things if you've got the cash fund to supplement it, where we had the cash fund because we had a healthy capital improvement. So, capital improvement is used, um, responsibly in many different avenues. A, for our building and for our upkeep, but B, to maintain it so that if something happens, we've set ourselves up to be able to do emergency things, even if we follow through with grants afterwards. Health insurance fund is simply that. Each fund that has personnel transfers funds common into the health insurance fund. And then the health insurance bills are paid out of the fund. County developmental sales tax, which is a C D T lovingly referred to as, it's got its own sales tax that comes in, revenues here. And then each of these agencies has the applications that we go through and then they're written out. Those numbers are decided by the commission. How much is allotted?
Well, I, I wanna stress this before we leave the C D T. Um, because both of you may be here when that needs renewed. And, and that's a half cent. And, and without that, we would, we would, there would be, we'd be in national defeat here. The voters renew that, I think it sunsets again in like twenty, thirty-two, maybe?
I think it's in thirties, yeah.
Yeah. And so, just keep that in mind. We, we brought it back before the voters a couple years prior to that. Uh, and they overwhelmingly renewed it. But you're gonna come in here in oh, oh, five, right? So, at the end of your first term, uh, needs to be some thought about how you want to renew that, uh, for another ten years or whether you want sunset on it or, or what. But that's critical to county budget. And, uh, just so in that seed right now, um, the half-cent G R is there for perpetuity. But that C D T, if, if we were not to be able to collect that, it would be devastating. So...
Because the C D T is a big player to law enforcement and to Road and Bridge.
Road and Bridge got one point three million out of it in this budget, so.
Yeah, for the safety issue.
Anyway, sorry, Linda. I just, I just wanted to stress that.
One-on-one, that's okay. We're just talking. So, yeah, fire, roads, cities, um, special projects, emergency management gets transferred out here to help provide for O E M. They get that too. So, we'll give that just, but that's all. You can see it in there and understand where it's going. And then emergency management has their own fund. They also have revenues, which is, so departments, someone called departments. Underneath you guys, that you are the office holder to, is maintenance, O E M, and Road and Bridge. You have, and, um, nine-one-one as of twenty twenty-five. You have foreman, be it whatever they refer, director, foreman, whatever, they are the head of that department, but you are the office holder. So, you are responsible for that budget and you're responsible for talking with your foreman or your director or whomever to create a budget that is for this. Just like I would create mine, I was, um, as an office holder, you have those departments multiple to create as an office holder and to present and then to consider and approve. You do get to do dual sides on that one a little bit, so... Um, so then there's emergency management funds here. Everything that has, every fund that has personnel will have salaries, health insurance, transfer outs, workman's comp, F I C As along that line. You'll see that in each one of them. Then plus their operating expenses. Other funds you'll see that are outside is L E P C. So, that's one of them that they turn over a budget. They're working on it. He just messaged him, said he'd be a couple days and told him fine. Cert is another one that comes under our emergency responding. And then you get into office holder special funds more so. So, election services is one I have. Um, law enforcement training, the sheriff has several. He's standard. Sheriff's discretionary fund. And they do have guidelines as to what they were created for in order to accomplish, one of them's to accomplish gun safety, that's C C W, is to help them do some things that are there. Discretionary is really a discretionary fund. L E T is law enforcement trainings, that everything training can come from that fund, which qualifiers that if they have bills towards something, they pick the appropriate fund for what they can spend out of for those. Inmate security, that's how we pay for, they're paying for one of the cars. Is because one car, new car comes in is always the first in line because there's so many miles it gets put on transport vehicle from Jeff City to Green County to wherever. All of those get done and that car gets a lot of miles put on it. So, inmate security is then able to qualify to be able to have one vehicle, in our case, a vehicle out of it. That is the dedicated runner for all inmates. Supplement, deputy sheriff supplemental fund. That is a fund that is ran by the task force of the state of Missouri. Court cases have a fee attached to certain cases. And those are turned over to the treasurer. The treasurer then sends them to the state. The state has a task force. It takes all these funds, has created a chart of how to best fund counties, supplement counties, sheriffs, deputy sheriffs. And this comes back then to each county. You apply for it as a grant, so to speak. You're applying for it. And then they qualify you out for so many based on the funds that they have in their pool. And then at this point, it's a hundred dollars additionally a month for the qualified deputy sheriffs. So, their salary sees that additional supplemental to it. This fund is where that's managed through them. Prosecutor training fund, that's just what it is. All training comes out of prosecuting training fund. Prosecuting attorney handling fund, used to be a bad check fund. People have checks in the chain, so it become the handling fund. They renamed it and reclassified it, but it's still basically what it is. They have another delinquent fund. The delinquent fund runs under different statutes than what all the other funds do. Everything within this budget, and I'm gonna say this kinda like I do a budget, everything within this budget is county commission approved. Now, that being said, it's a hundred percent true. But in the delinquent fund, the prosecutor and attorney does have the ability to set that budget. Now, we're all responsible to make sure it doesn't set delinquent, but they do have the ability in this one fund statutorily to do what they want to of it. But the commission still has to approve it. It goes through. Victim advocate fund, there is an employee down in prosecutor and attorney's office that is solely a victim advocate fund person. It's a grant that they apply for to have an additional person hired and they work victim restitution. That's their complete job in all of it. So, this person is hired and then paid through this fund. That fund then sends in for reimbursement to the state. The state then sends back money. It sets a budget and the one person completely works out of the victim advocate fund. That's why it's here. It's ran underneath prosecuting attorney as a special fund. The reporter has a special fund, which they can use for qualified expenses, and a reporter technical fund, which they can use for qualified expenses. And then you get into circuit clerk. The circuit clerk has a budget and general revenue up here that is for operating expenses somewhat, but they are a state office. They have more than one operating budgets. The state gives them some and the county gives them some too. But primarily back here, when you hit these, circuit clerk interest funds, these are all state and court held funds. So, they have to get approval, signature approval for all of these funds back here. Circuit clerk interest, juvenile assessment, time payment fund, juvenile, um... There's two juvenile, juvenile assessment, juvenile. We don't, the county doesn't write these, is where I'm saying with that. Time payment, yeah. Juvenile justice, that's the other one, preservation fund. These are approved, and the law library fund, these are approved through courts and their daily work. The drug treatment court fund, not to be confused with opioid and anything else. So, the drug, drug treatment court fund is one that clients fund as they're beginning to work. It's the, it's the program that Judge Winfrey helped initiate and get going. So that a certain number of ten, twelve, something like that, number of people they work with into a, uh, functioning place again. Helping them get to a functioning societal place again. Turning, getting steps into workforce, getting steps into, um, housing, getting steps into away from where they found themselves at.
Rehabilitating them back into, into society, yeah.
So, they pay fees as they're working, as they get people who help supply jobs, they pay fees in back into it too. Because these fees then help them get lane changer, whomever may be a part of what they're doing. So, this is that. Drug treatment court fund is funded and expended through fees or maybe a grant that they may have gotten. But through that contained area. So, when we get back to the opioid settlement fund, that's county. This is settlement money that has been derived from settlements out of pharmaceuticals or manufacturers and...
Distributors.
Distributors. I was gonna say, you've seen who they are more. But those funds this year came into us in a, and I hate to say a half-hazard, but it sort of was. It was, "Oh, by the way, these guys got named in a settlement and now there's a thousand dollars here or fifteen here or whatever the case may be." So, we're receiving all of them.
Well, so, some of those funds will continue to come in, uh, up until, I think, thirty, thirty-five. Some of them will continue to come in for three or four years. I'm trying to compile that information now to get that to Linda. Um, and so, we don't have a finite number because all of those lawsuits and settlements are still somewhat ongoing. And then there's always the possibility that those could be challenged. But, uh, but as a result of that, uh, we really don't have a finite number to put in there yet. But we hope to be able to do that so we can project that in the budget. But just know that from, uh, from this budget up until thirty, thirty-five, there's gonna be funds likely to, to come in. So, uh, the treasurer's aware of that and we're trying to get it so that those who follow us will know why those funds are, are still, still coming in. And I have a phone call out there right now with the, uh, with our representative from, from the company, just so we can try to know what those funds are. Right now, we really don't. Right now, we really don't, we had, we had what probably twenty or thirty thousand come in this year. I think it was a pretty large amount.
There was one amount that is ten thousand that they hadn't expected.
That we just didn't even.
And then the others were small, like two thousand, two thousand or something.
Didn't know what it was or where it was coming from?
Well, we.
Not until they told you.
Not, not until we received the notification that the funds were being deposited. And they do that by email.
Like multi laundry, five, five, oh, really, buddy?
Yeah. But it may be the only time you find it. You know, we don't know. That's what we're trying to, that's what our question and conversation was.
You're going to wash the clothes.
You know, did we get CBS? Did we get a, you know, manufacturer this time, but will we get it next year? We don't know. We didn't even know he's getting this one. Can we give a little more information on this, please?
And these funds come with restrictions. There's a very small percentage that can be used for administrative purposes, but there's very intentional guidelines that we have to follow. We've, we've, at the request of Judge Winfrey, we've budgeted some of those opioid funds to help uh, with his cause, his project, but we're not obligated to that. There are different considerations. There might be.
Dare was one of the first considerations.
Yeah. And, and we did give Dare, uh, five hundred dollars, I think, that, that first year that we received. Lane change could be a possibility. But there could be someone approached the commission that we don't even know yet that might fit those guidelines. So typically, we're probably going to allocate what our fund balance is, but then we'll designate to what we know will go to. Like if, if we're going to allocate some for the drug treatment court, we'll designate that. And that may just be a percentage. But then let's say in May, somebody comes in and says, commission, we would like to request five thousand dollars out of opioid settlement fund. We've, we've, we've budgeted that, right? Am I?
Yeah, because in this particular one, there was, um, the sheriff's expenses had a budget, the drug court had a budget. And then there was the expenditure budget of it, an unknown.
Yeah.
Potential could come in and out, so.
So it's available for us to, uh.
But we had to budget.
To allocate, but, but because of the budgeting process, if we didn't budget it, then we couldn't spend it. So, so we budget all of it, allocate some of it and then leave some over the variable form.
So it's not considered new money?
No, because it's all, it's already there.
It's already existing.
It's already there.
The cash is already existing. So what?
But the, the amounts that come in.
You, it's just under an expenditure.
Why don't I give you an example?
So it's expenditure nine thousand.
So, uh, with the MOU with the city eleven and for the combined dispatch, where we're providing a service now to the city eleven. So contrarily, so this month, we received the initial prorated amount for that agreement. So that's new funds that came in here, Eric, probably just last week or week before. So those funds, we could expend those now if we, uh, needed to. But those are going to roll into the budget that you'll, you'll see. That would be new funds that, that came in.
And it was acquired throughout this year after the budget process started?
Yeah. It was acquired in November, this December, late November.
Yeah.
And then there are special funds. And you'll see them as they come in, you'll have a grouping when we go to meet with and we will have hearings. That they'll come in and say, okay, here's my budgets, here's what I'm planning. Some of them are very cut and dry. Um, they're saying, I'm just, I got an increase on this one. So I raised my budget five hundred dollars because that's what my bigger equipment maintenance is, you know, whatever the case may be. Some of them go, you know what? I'd really like to have this and this and this and yours. Why? You hear those. That's what the budget hearings are about. You hear those and make your notes on them or whatever and discuss them and consider them. You can't make decisions at that point in time because you don't know how it's affecting the whole yet. So you have to have the individual hearings in order to gather that information to go back and then see, what does it do to my cash balance? Depending on each one of them, what does it do to the cash balance? Can we manage that? Or do we have to go back and say, maybe there's a Chevrolet out there instead of the Cadillac? Is there any way we can do that? So each one of those is just a working process. You got to look at it as it comes.
Yes, just like fuel and repairs. Kind of long, no? Both of them. Even though, you know, what fuel is today? It can sway a buck and buck and a half as you seem to do that to that. So you've got to put enough money in that fund to make it through the year that does it. And repairs, the ones that are unknown. You know, if you have a hundred thousand dollar breakdown of a piece of equipment, which we don't usually because we're leasing, but same thing, we do own some.
Which is why they went to lease.
Yeah.
Because they were having all that old equipment and then something would go out and everything.
But that's how big a variation over a year that you can have. You've got a plan for that extra buck and a half that you have to bake or feel sometimes.
And in that same world, if you don't, if you needed fifty thousand and you didn't have that in your budget, then so picking road and bridge when you have, when you have an end number and this one's gone and fuels out. And so now you're, you have to maintain within your fund expenditure total. So you can borrow from other line items. You still charge it out of the appropriate line because you need to know that history. You need to see the tracking the next year, whatever you're coming into. But this end number is right back here that says, here's what you was approved for. You can't go over that.
But you, you typically wouldn't, wouldn't allow us to go out of one line item to another till about November, right?
We try and keep that. It's not a good practice. Because then there's really.
But you typically would look at it in November to say.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Well, we'll look at it sooner if you start going over to.
Yeah, if you go over, then it gets looked at a lot quicker.
Yeah.
Okay. Since we're speaking of budget, we just received a renewal on property and casualty and it has increased sixty four thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Like that.
So from.
Of an increase.
Last year was one ninety four, two twenty four. And twenty twenty five is two fifty eight, four fifty one. I think.
There was one residential with us.
Next year. But I'm, she's, this year.
It's crazy.
I don't want you to say it, because we're just pocketing this money.
It's a racket.
It's a racket. Well, we're the corporate.
Sorry.
That's why he's serving because he feels guilty.
He's giving back.
I missed that, but it's.
We blinded all on the insurance agents.
Yeah, it got me. Hmm, that's sad.
You know, this is, it's the industry nationwide.
It's the way they came up with this. Forever things, right, sir?
So that bill that just came in is the sheriff's bill. And we will break it down, Michael, break it down. We'll break it down as a county. We break it down and it becomes proportionate out to the funds.
Sixty seven thousand.
Yeah. So general revenue is going to see more than what we would probably anticipate.
So there goes the road and bridge, fuel and bridge.
Yeah.
That's using my word, starts taking the white tab of the southern and road and bridge.
Already took a twenty thousand dollar hit more than what we had anticipated and have had in some years. So yeah, this is the reality of, okay, well now we've got to really start honing down into where, where who, what line item, why or does it cover? What is going to go over? And if you needed to buy a box culvert because you thought you had the funds at this point in time, it may go, wait till next year.
It's a pause.
We've got to pay.
And then health insurance goes up that much the next year, so there goes a pause.
Gratefully, it's not going to.
Well, gratefully, we're, we're expending some of these ARPA balances for states that won't loss that would not, would be a budget item coming up.
And who said crime doesn't pay? Because in the crime line, it changed zero percent, so crime must pay.
Shelter abuse gets its own fees from the court and then we turn the fees over to them. It's just a written transfer clearinghouse account. And the county law enforcement restitution fund, lovingly referred to as CLRF, it is there to help support law enforcement things too. Sometimes it's TASER orientated. They use it for batteries or for chargers or for things that they did on the TASERS. So there's several resources that.
There's a board that, that bought the citizens and oversee that and make the recommendation to the sheriff. I'm sure there's a lot of input goes into that recommendation, but there's actually a, a board that oversees that fund.
And, and then also in the last of the sheriff's funds, they also have an LAF availability where private citizens can donate into those funds. And we'll get a report on that at the end of the year showing what the activity was and those. And the canines are funded through that. They don't come through discount, but they come through the LAF side.
Would that be on the LAF? Do they designate that for, that's what you're saying? That's what they're giving their money for specifically for that?
I think the idea is.
On some of those?
Yeah, I would say there's a designated purpose, yes. I think the designated, I mean, I think the, um, convenience of that is, or the drive of that is, is when you contribute funds into LAF because they are a tax shelter. Bible one, three C, yeah. C three nonprofit. Because they are that, then individuals can get a tax write-off from them. Where if they donated it directly, they wouldn't get anything from that because we're tax exempt. So there's nothing for us to give to them. So if they donate it to LAF and then funds come out of LAF, it's a pass through that benefits the giver in the tax side of it.
So I wonder if you get that from them, it shows that, and it will be worked out. Yeah, we'll see that this amount was allocated directly here and then LAF also put some more with it or something. If that's be the case, okay.
The guardian side on that one is that the county's got to know at US officers, commission officers, you've got to know what's going on in that fund because if there was a vehicle bought out of that fund, then who's going to keep up the insurance? Who's going to keep up the liability? Who's going to keep the tires? Who's going to? So it's, it's a hand in hand working process. When it is a contained, like the canines, when it's contained, it can come or it can go based on just itself. But when it incurs more than that on behalf of the county, then there's got to be a, you accept this responsibility for it also. So it's a joined effort in that gateway side of it. And then ARPA, the, you know, the rescue, the thing you've heard has got to be committed this year, but can be spent in the next couple of years out of getting to that in part of it. So let me give you.
You did one?
If you'll give one to David. So I emphasize on these, that this is what's been turned over by supervisors, foremen. So this is, I don't know. In looking at them for you guys, you know, you, you can explain maybe some of them as to. So on maintenance, it's just big maintenance. He's really only got salaries and three other things. On that back sheet where it's these, that's detailing out why those numbers are created on the budget front. Oh, I need to pull them in a, okay. Anyway, that's the numbers that they turned over. Each one of those is the numbers, the one forty. Yeah, one forty repair, that key, and one oh seven service contracts and twenty thousand supplies. This is what makes those up.
Yeah.
I want to, just looking at his budget. What about the floor under that? Somebody come in and just touch his floors.
That's discussion.
Buy in or something. I think that you would probably want something like that. That we just, I think there may be just little copies there. He probably didn't think anything about that, but. You know, it's a little border, we mentioned. Yeah, somebody can. Just come in and buff them up and touch up. They're very good.
Something about salaries and.
We're going to, how, how in depth. It's what she said, as much as anybody wants to. I mean, I'm, I'm okay. I'm just curious.
It was said from the last.
I just asked Linda about, he might want to put something in the, in the main bill.
That's true.
What he has for flooring. Somebody come in and buff those up.